Go up big if you're gonna die, right?
All right. All right, everyone, I want to welcome you to our first public hearing. So we need a motion to open it. I think we, um, welcome to the public hearing for the redevelopment agency budget hearing for Kaysville City. Today is June 6, 2024, and it's 6:30 PM. Would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing? Or actually, first we'll turn the time over to Jason, or do we just need to open it? Okay, all right. Would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Oaks, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. If anyone is here to speak to the public hearing for the redevelopment agency budget, you are, feel free to come on over to the mic and, and tell us what you think. So if no one actually wants to speak, we'll still leave the public hearing open until 6:35 in case someone walks in late. And then at 6:35, we'll make a motion to close it, and then we'll open the next public hearing. That's kind of how this process will go for those that are watching.
Mayor, maybe as a matter of introduction, if I can.
Sure. Thank you, thank you.
As you know, we've been working on the budget for the last several, several months.
I don't know if the micro, if your microphone's on.
Yeah, let's see if it came.
Worse. Is that better?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you. And as you know, we've been working on the budget for the last several months, and we're at the stage now where we're required to hold a series of public hearings, as required by statute. So we have several public hearings scheduled tonight between now and 7 o'clock. And as you remember, we, uh, we'll have a budget work session scheduled next Wednesday. So the purpose tonight is just to hear any public comments related to the budget, and then we'll have a follow-up work session next Wednesday to discuss these items.
Thank you so much, Dean. I should have turned the time over to you to introduce this for us. Appreciate you doing that.
This is the awkward silence, Tommy?
Right.
I, I think it's Abby's turn to do karaoke, right?
I don't think that's ever been a thing.
We could make it.
We, we could.
I don't think you can introduce a motion on that, so.
Which clock are we using? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to wait, uh, Jason, do we need to wait till 6:35 on the dot?
No, that's when the other one starts.
Well, just to start the next one, right? We need to wait.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you can't start till the next, till that time.
Okay.
Thirteen seconds.
Do we have to vote on the other?
Oh, are we using that clock? Okay, I was. Right, so two minutes.
Two minutes.
Okay.
I do usually have funny stories, but I don't know. Get one. Maybe I'll wait for the municipal building authority hearing. Anyway, this is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Uh, Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Public hearing for the redevelopment agency is closed. Would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the municipal building authority budget?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the municipal building authority budget.
And I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
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 If anyone would like to speak to this item, please make your way to the microphone. You'll have until 6:40. Oh, I'm sorry, Dean, did you?
No, no. Do you want me to provide any information with these, Mayor?
Oh, you certainly can, certainly can. I just, go ahead.
The municipal building authority is a separate, uh, political entity that we use to finance public buildings. And this budget is the tentative budget for the authority. And this budget is related to lease payments for the buildings that we, uh, finance, uh, the police station and the city hall. So the building authority budget for fiscal year '25 is projected to be $717,000.
Thank you for that. We'll have you do that before the next one, before we start.
Just a question, Dean, do you have the due dates of when those are gonna be up?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your mic.
Do you have the due dates of when they're gonna be up? The police station and then this one? Do you have any, tentatively when they'll be paid for? I, I don't know. I don't remember.
I still can't hear you, I'm sorry.
He was asking for due dates when those bonds are, expire for the two, for the police station and for the park.
When's the loan gonna be paid off on the two? That's what I'm asking.
When, when will, when will the loan be paid off?
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mike. One of them is 2031, is the police station, and 2034 for, for this building.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there we go.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the municipal building budget hearing.
I'll second.
Looks like we have 45 seconds.
Is this an opportunity to ask a question about something, like what was the unplanned operating expense?
Oh. Um, sure, you, you can do it if you'd like to. Will you, will you come to the mic? Okay.
Sorry, Jason Largie, I don't know if that, I was just curious if we have any itemization of what the unplanned operating expense was that was not budgeted or we had nothing. So now we're planning on further operating expenses moving forward.
Yeah, the $3,000 operating expense is a, is a trustee cost for the bondholders. The, uh, the bank has a trustee expense to pass on that debt payment to the bondholders. And I believe last year it was a part of the debt service total and wasn't broken out as a separate line item.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Councilmember Oaks.
Aye.
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 I make a motion that we open a public hearing and comment on the Kaysville City Budget Hearing Fiscal Year 2025 Compensation Schedule for Executive Municipal Officers.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I think we can do that. We'll call.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Dean, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a new requirement, uh, this fiscal year. Uh, the state legislature passed a, a legislation last year, uh, to hold a separate public hearing anytime there was a, a budgeted increase in executive level compensation. So that includes, um, any elected officials and statutory appointed officials, including department heads. So the, the proposed tentative budget at this stage, uh, does include increases, uh, for, in those areas, and they're listed as, as you can see there.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone here to speak to this topic? If you are, the time is yours. You can come up to the mic. Please state your name for the record, and we'll give you, we'll close this public hearing at 6:45. This is an open mic.
Does it get any less awkward?
It's a time to ponder. We're pondering.
There you go. Pondering in the sun all day.
We're wondering.
Recite a scripture.
Yeah, exactly.
My name's Michael Larson. I want to ask you some questions about this as I'm reading it. So, uh, is it correct that this is, uh, the budget is planning to, uh, market adjust the compensation for the council and the mayor by $19,900 this year? Is that, is, is that what it will be adjusted to, or is that the amount of the adjustment?
That is the adjustment.
That is the adjustment. So what, what will be the new total?
I'm not sure I have that right off the top of my head.
Okay.
Will you maybe tell us, um?
Do you know when the last time there was an adjustment? Six years? Is it the same with the, the executive staff? Has it been that long?
No, the executive staff, there, there typically is an adjustment each year, either a market adjustment or a merit increase if, if they're eligible.
Okay. And do you know what those market adjustments were based on? Is it a CPI or something like that?
This current market adjustment, as it's listed here, is a, is a 3% market adjustment and a merit up to 3% as well, for those, for those that are eligible for a merit increase.
Okay.
And this includes, uh, executive staff, um, department head level only.
Okay. All right. That's all I was interested in. Thank you.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to close the budget hearing for this item?
Yeah, I'm, I'll make a motion that we close the Kaysville Budget Hearing on Compensation Schedule for Executive Municipal Officers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to the Kaysville City Budget Hearing for Fiscal Year 2025 Enterprise Funds and Interfund Services and Transfers, turn the time over to Dean.
Thank you. This hearing is another requirement from the state legislature, uh, whenever there is interfund activity, activity from an enterprise fund to a governmental fund, uh, you're required to hold a public hearing to disclose that. And this is a, a two-part, uh, hearing. Uh, the first section is what we call reciprocal transfers, and that means, uh, if, if the government, if, if the government is providing a service to the enterprise fund, the enterprise fund pays for that service. So, for example, uh, the electric utility fund is paying the general fund $305,000 for the service the general fund is providing to the electrical fund, for example, sending out bills, uh, utility billing, accounting, all those general activities. And it, and it was administration, information services, our IT department, our fleet services, and you can see the, the total amount, it is a cash transfer from the enterprise funds to the governmental funds. The next section is what's called nonreciprocal transfers, and this is where the utility provides a value to the, to the government. An example of that would be our electric utility provides lights for, for our buildings, for our park facilities, and we, we record what value that is on our financial statement, and we disclose it in this, in this hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Someone like, we already did the motion, right?
No.
Oh, would someone make a motion to open the, the hearing for the Kaysville City Budget Fiscal Year 2025? Enterprise Funds and Interland, Interfund Transfers and Services.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the Kaysville City Budget Hearing, um, Fiscal Year 2025 Enterprise Funds, Interfund Services, and Transfers.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay with doing that? Thank you. We will close this hearing at 6:50. Oh. But you can't hear? Anyone else? I don't know. Maybe I'll tweak the mics for a minute, obviously.
What are you doing?
It's, it's really hard here.
Just got us.
It's your outside voice.
I'll try to get closer.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
That we close the budget hearing for fiscal year 2025 on enterprise funds and interfund services and transfers.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Here, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We need, so the next item is the Kaysville City Budget Hearing Fiscal Year 2025 Amendments to Fiscal Year 2024 Budgets in Consideration of the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget. I'll turn the time over to Dean to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope this is, I'll talk a little bit louder here. Uh, this, this hearing includes two parts as well. It includes the amendment to the, to the current budget, and then consideration of the fiscal year '25 budget. I apologize, these numbers are, are kind of small. As we go through the budget process, it, it sometimes is necessary to amend the budget, and we look at those areas that, uh, may be over budget and, uh, itemize why they may be over budget. If there is an item that is under budget, we will not, we will not list it on this form. But there are three areas in the general fund, uh, that, uh, need to, we need to amend. It's the city council budget, uh, increase it by $24,000, and that is my error that we prepaid the League of Cities and Towns, uh, bill early. It was, it wasn't due until July, and we've, we've paid it early, so we won't have that expense next year. Uh, the, the second item is related to a, a staffing issue, uh, in planning and zoning area. And then the third item is, is under fleet maintenance. Uh, we had programmed, uh, the purchase of several larger vehicles, and when they were not available, we, we shifted gears midstream and, and purchased some smaller passenger vehicles and doubled up on those this year, uh, because the bigger vehicles weren't available. So that expense will drop off next year. And then the, the second classification there, uh, is related to those nonreciprocal utility expenses that we al- already talked about. Uh, since it is a requirement to show these on our financial statements, they need to be shown as a, a budget item. Uh, there's not a, not a cash transaction related, but you still have to show it on your financial statements as a, as a budget item. And then finally, the, the debt service fund, uh, there's a, a minor adjustment there for fiscal year '24. The, the second part of this hearing is related to, to fiscal year '25, and there are, are several summary sheets here, and I probably won't go through all these, but the, the major fund of the city is the, the general fund. And, uh... Where am I? Uh, the general operating fund of the city, the tentative budget for fiscal year '25, if you look at the third column over, is about a $24 million, uh, general fund budget. When you include all other funds, um, enterprise funds, uh, utility funds, the total budget's about $80 million for fiscal year, uh, 2025. This budget is available on our website for review, and the purpose of tonight is to take any public comment related to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing for this item?
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for fiscal year 2025 Amendments to the fiscal year 2024 budgets and consideration of FY 2025 budgets.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now open. If you have something you'd like to share or comment regarding this item, please come forward. Wait a couple minutes here to see if anyone would like to speak to it.
It's always fun to.
Might as well use something while we're here, right?
Absolutely.
Couple of questions. First off, the elections, um, planned $64, spent $55,000, is that what that is? I can't see the top of the column. I'm curious what that, like, drastic change in that. And then the second part is, why do we not plan for the unreimbursed, the funds transfer that we're accounting for? Like, our budget is zero, and we know we're gonna spend money on electricity and sanitation. So is that just an accounting principle, where we just don't, don't ever plan for them, but we just pay for them? Because I'm just, that's, that's just an interesting point, but I'm very curious about the $55,000 over $64.
Thank you.
I can answer the first question.
Okay.
First question related to elections. Uh, city elections are held every other year, so there's an expense every other year. So next fiscal year, beginning July 1st, there will not be that expense.
But we didn't plan for, we meant $64, we spent $50,000. Like, if we were to calculate, why did we, is that not what that means? Or we budgeted $55,000? Sorry. I couldn't see the top of the column.
It, there are a lot of numbers on there, so. Thank, thank you, Dean.
As you can see, the, the '24, this, this year, there was an election, and that's the budget, the $55,000. The '23 was probably a, a carryover, a, a public notice or something like that expense.
Thank you. Oh, wait.
What, what do we pay the League of Cities and Towns for? What do they do?
They are actually a wonderful lobbying body for the cities and towns. So when the state decides to come up with a law that maybe, uh, doesn't have any funding attached to it, the league will pull the cities, we're all members of, uh, it's called LPC, it's a policy meeting. And during the legislative session, we have people who are appointed to vote as members for that league or that policy meeting. And the league will say, hey, we've got this, this, this law, this is how it affects cities, how do we feel about it as cities? And so as cities, we say, you know, we don't like that law, kill that law, change that law. And the League of Cities and Towns goes and meets it with the state legislators, and they work to compromise and figure out ways in which to help cities and represent cities. They're a really great lobbying body. Um, I'm part of the board, and I've been able to serve for the last couple of years, and they do fantastic work. Very, very, very grateful. It, it makes it possible so that the city doesn't have to necessarily hire our own full-time lobbyist.
And that's the same with Envision Utah?
No, Division Utah is different. It's a different organization.
But they do the same thing, right? Where if there was a suit that came against the city, Envision Utah would come?
Oh, Envision Utah.
Envision Utah.
Okay, I'm not as familiar with Envision Utah as I am with the Utah League of Cities and Towns, so couldn't speak to that.
Okay.
Thank you, Jill.
Can I add to that, Jill?
Uh-huh.
Um, cause I've been actively engaged, and many of us up here have as well with the league. And if there's ever an issue where, uh, let's say there's a bill coming down the pipeline, and the majority of the league members support it, but we as a city don't, we, it allows us an opportunity to make that very clear and, and an avenue to lobby the other cities. And at the end of the day, if we're on the wrong side, it's still a good opportunity to be a part of it, and it gives us a lot of tools as individuals in the city to advocate for our needs. And they also provide a lot of resources that we wouldn't otherwise have. And so, just to kind of add a little more to that.
So is the payment to them for legal as well as lobbying?
Um, it's basically a membership, it's based on population, and it's based on, um, I think mostly population. So for example, this last session, the state legislature had a bill that they wanted to, um, take back power coal plants, that the city, Kaysville City has a power plant, so we've invested a lot of money into this coal plant. And so as cities, there's only, I think, 15, a handful of cities, under 20, I think, that are actually, um, own their own power companies in Utah. And the league representing the city said, okay, well, we're still representing you even though there's a small percentage of you. So they have been lobbying for us to get some amendments to the bill, to be friendlier to the cities like Kaysville. And so they truly do represent our interests. They do really great work, so I, I think that they're an outstanding lobbying firm for the city, not just Kaysville City, but all the cities.
Okay.
Thank you, Jill.
Mayor?
Because everything we've talked up here is true. And a couple of weeks ago, I attended a breakfast for, almost like a counter to the League of Cities and Towns, much more conservative side that they're trying to get going and working. But as a whole, I would applaud what the organization does here in Utah to help us.
Thank you. Appreciate you for including that. All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, come on up. I'm not a mathematician, and I haven't taken calculus, but it seems to me like when I heard a 3% raise, that the administrative services for the city managers seems a little bit more than a 3% raise, so I'm, maybe I'm wrong. Is it, this 261 was budgeted and you did the 210? Is that what it was? Or, I'm not wanting to, I just wondered.
That's total budget, not just personnel side of things, that's operating budget as well.
So it's not just one person?
Oh, no, no, that's not just per person. That's the entire, that's all of us. Thank you for that clarification.
Shoot.
Yeah. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we end public hearing on the Kaseville budget hearing fiscal year 2025 amendments to the FY 24 budgets. Oh, I'm reading the wrong paper here. The amendments to the FY 24 budgets and consideration of FY 25 budgets.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That will end our public hearings for these budget items. We are now going to move into our city council meetings. Are you guys okay, or do we need a break? We're okay? Okay, so we'll move forward to our city council meeting. I want to welcome everyone to the Kaseville City Council meeting for June 6, 2024. We're starting at 7:03 PM. Want to just let you know, for those of you who are new who are joining us, what we, kind of what our rules are for our city council meeting. So first thing is, we want to make sure that we support each other, so please don't clap or applaud, because it can be intimidating if you're on the other side, and we don't want to create that kind of a tension-filled environment. So please don't clap or applaud. We appreciate you being here. We have a call to the public, which is a three-minute time limit. We want to hear from as many people as have the opportunity to sign up. We're always available to talk to us as well. So you can stay after the meeting, you can email us, you can call us. Most of it, we all have contact information out there. We want to hear from everybody. Let's see, the other comment would just be that it's sometimes really hard to hear our meetings. A lot of people listen online, so if you would like to have conversations, please take them into the lobby. The meeting is also, you can hear the meeting from the lobby. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard and to have the opportunity to participate in our meetings. So with that being said, I will turn the time over to Councilmember John Adams to provide our opening, and then he'll provide the pledge of allegiance. He'll lead us in that, and we'll stand and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just going to offer a word of prayer, but want to thank everybody for being here. We love the attendance and hope that we can represent each and every one of you with any decisions we make. So I'll offer a word of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee at this time and thank thee for our many blessings. We're especially grateful to be citizens of this great country and to live in this great state, and especially to live in this city, Kaseville. We're grateful for thy continued blessings upon each and every one of us. We're grateful for all of our service members who are serving inside and outside of the country, and ask thee to watch over and protect them, keep them safe, continue to keep our liberties there, and allow us to be civil and kind to one another. We pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll stand, repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. I'll turn the time over to our city manager, Jason Christianson, first, and then we will open up the meeting for public comment. So if you've signed up to speak, get ready, and I'll call you out by name in just a minute, not yet. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have a lot of residents who have signed up to speak about the homeless issue, so we wanted to provide some information just that might answer some of the questions that people have. And I apologize in advance if you've heard this information before, it's somewhat repetitive maybe for some people that are really familiar with what's going on. But first of all, if you're not aware, this whole thing started last year with House Bill 499, which required counties of the second class, such as Davis County, to put together a winter response task force. And the charge on those task forces was to come up with a winter response plan to house unsheltered people between October 15th and April 30th, and also to provide a Code Blue temporary shelter whenever the temperature is projected to drop below 18 degrees for a night. So this task force is made up of the county commission chair and six mayors throughout Davis County. The task force has been meeting basically since April of last year, working towards coming up with a Code Blue response plan. Again, that's, the Code Blue response plan is a temporary plan that would basically happen over the next two winters until eventually a permanent facility can be funded and placed somewhere in the county. Under the state mandate, the county is required to submit a plan for the Code Blue responses by August 1st of this year. So we've got less than two months, or when I say "we," the county has less than two months, the task force has less than two months to submit a plan. I think, trying to think of some of the questions that might be asked as well, as far as what's the size of the Code Blue facility, that the state requires that 16 cots be provided based on the numbers that they're seeing. And so I think, looking at last year's Code Blue events, I believe there were 23 nights where it dropped below 18 degrees. And so I believe anywhere from, you know, eight or 10 individuals to up to 20 or 30 at times would be picked up during those Code Blue nights. And I shouldn't say picked up, but the plan up until now was giving out vouchers for motels. And so they'd give out anywhere from eight or 10 to 20, 20 or more during those times. So I think the projection is that during Code Blue, they're going to probably see anywhere from those numbers, 10 to 20, 30 people. Again, the requirement from the state is that at least 16 cots be provided, so just to give an idea of what kind of numbers they're looking at. Also, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about where the Code Blue facility would be located, but as you've probably heard before, there's been no decisions made by the task force. Given that the time is coming short with the deadline to submit a plan by August 1st, ideally, the task force will come up with locations, but if that's not possible, it's our understanding, at least based off of what Commissioner Stevenson said at the last county commission meeting, that the county also has the authority to go ahead and use any of its facilities in the county, whether that be, you know, senior centers, or the emissions building, or really any building in the county. I don't think that's at all their plan to go ahead and proceed with that unless it comes down to it, and there's no other option if the task force doesn't come through. Again, that task force is made up of the county commission chair and six mayors, so I think the question has been asked, you know, Mayor Tran sits on that task force, of course, and obviously, majority vote, so if it's not a unanimous vote, Mayor Tran could be outvoted. Again, we don't know where the location's going to be yet, just there's been discussion of a number of places which everyone's familiar with. Two of those locations that have been discussed is no secret, is the emissions building over by the Deseret Mills, and then of course, next door here at the senior center. The idea that, obviously, has been talked about as well as that this would be a rotating Code Blue center, so three or four cities would have Code Blue facilities, and perhaps that would be rotated around the county during those months between October 15th and April 30th. So if you do the math, you can think if we have, say, 20 to 30 Code Blue nights in a year, and you have three or four cities, you know, having, taking turns housing those individuals, you might have up to maybe eight or 10 Code Blue nights per city on average. And again, you're looking at anywhere from maybe eight to 10 to 20, 30 individuals. And what's been talked about also is that there would be transportation where these individuals would be picked up throughout the county, brought in for the night. The only requirement is that there are cots and that there's restroom facility. They don't need to be fed or entertained. The next morning, they would be taken back to where they were picked up the previous night. I think a lot of questions also have been about who ultimately has the authority on this? Is it the task force, or is it the county commission? Clearly, the legislation states that the intent is that the task force comes up with a, you know, a recommendation and submits that to the state. But again, as I stated, it's understanding based on what Commissioner Stevenson said, the county commission also has the authority, if it comes to it, that they can go ahead and use any facility that they already own, and nothing can be really done to veto that. And that's kind of where things stand again. Don't have any information at this point about where this is going to be done, or no decisions have been made in that regard. So that's pretty much all the information that we have at this point.
Thank you, Jason. So I will now turn the time over to you for public comment if you've signed up. But first, I just wanted to just sort of remind you what our governing rules are for this public comment period. What we're going to do this time is we're going to give you your three minutes to speak. We're not going to interrupt you, we're not going to ask you questions. We're not going to also give you any feedback to your questions during your time, because we want you to have your time. We will, however, be taking notes. And so after you're done speaking, and I'll turn the time over to the council, and they're really good about answering your questions, and you know, we can try to address the issues or the concerns that you have, to the best of our knowledge. And we don't have a lot of knowledge at this point in time. So that's how it will roll, and then we'll move through the rest of our agenda. So the people that have signed up to speak are Jason Largie, did I say that? Yeah, Jason Largie, Lisa Fuller, Jill Dredge, Lorene Starkey, and Luke Johnson. So if you'll come up in that order, you'll see a timer, and when your three minutes is over, the microphone will die, will cut. So come on down.
All right. My name is Jason Largie. The council knows me from several prior meetings on this topic, so my comments today hopefully are to help bring along anyone who hasn't been here and make a plea. I went to the city council, or the county commission meeting this week, and Commissioner Stevenson proposed this with a fool's choice that said, will you pick the senior center or the emissions center? And he pitted Kaseville against Kaseville. The entire time I've been participating in any of these discussions with HP 499, I appreciate that the council has said no Kaseville, period. Not Eastside, not Westside, no Kaseville. It doesn't make sense. We don't have the numbers that, we don't have homeless here, so why bring a shelter here? Another thing that I've learned is that semantics matter. It's been repeatedly said, whenever we talk about it, where you're planning for this, they go, we don't have a plan, we know you don't have a plan. You have intents to have a plan, is the language that somehow they keep on deflecting any, that we've never even explored doing anything. And they have. The county's been, in my opinion, targeting Kaseville for a reason I don't understand, as a consistent focused place to fulfill the Code Blue requirement. And then to follow on that, if we have to do any expense to modify any structure or facility for the purpose of making it a homeless shelter for Code Blue, that opens wide the gate to make it the permanent solution and the long-term solution. Because once you've spent money to make it a thing, it's that thing. It is no longer temporary. Commissioner Stevenson talked a lot about not wanting, wanting rotating every night, that it's needed so that we don't have congregating spaces. Well, if we're really interested in providing a service that's temporary, that meets the need, that helps people not freeze to death at night, which is what Code Blue is about, why do we make it where they're not? The county knows where the homeless are. The county knows. And a temporary solution for a temporary issue that's night by night, buy the required number of cots, buy an army canvas tent that's big enough to house those cots, buy a heater, and rent a toileting facility the nights that it's needed. That is temporary. There will not create any congregating, take it to where they know the homeless are to meet a need. And please, please, residents of Kaseville, quit saying east versus west. The people who've been involved in this a long time, who've been opposed to the more focused touring of the emissions center, have not ever said, put it somewhere else in Kaseville. Let's offer up the senior center. That's never been said by anyone that I've ever heard, and I don't believe it's the intent of anyone in Kaseville. I did hear at the county commission meeting, several people fall into the trap of Commissioner Stevenson when he asked, well, would you rather have it at the emissions center if we don't put it at the senior center? And several people, and many people, said yes. So please, don't undo all the work that the council has been doing, and I laud the efforts, and I laud the efforts of Mayor Tran to make it transparent, and not hidden and not done in secret.
Thank you.
I am Lisa Fuller. I have been a resident of Kaseville for 21 years, and I also have taught at Kaseville Elementary for 15 years. And I am here just to express my deep concern for our children that attend Kaseville Elementary. And to me, that needs to be our focus. And I 100% agree that we need to provide a Code Blue location for those who are unsheltered. But next to an elementary school is not the location. And I have seen in, especially the last 15 years, the fear and anxiety of our students has increased for several different reasons. And I have no doubt that the students knowing that the facility right across their school could cause even more fear and anxiety and uncertainty, and can affect their learning and the safety that we so desire and work hard as a district, as a community, as a faculty at Kaseville Elementary. This would add a whole new measure of providing safety for our students. And I just 100% agree that the location that the county is considering across the street from Kaseville Elementary should not happen for the safety and well-being of our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Jill Dredge. With all the discussions that we've had since last October regarding the Code Blue or permanent homeless shelter, I keep circling around to one question, why Kaseville? There's been a lot of conflicting statements. Is it temporary, or permanent, or both? Where? Here in Kaseville? Why in Kaseville? People are concerned that the temporary shelter will lead to a permanent shelter. We all know that once homelessness is introduced, it does not leave. It was stated this week that it...
could cause even more fear and anxiety and uncertainty and can affect their learning and the safety that we so desire and work hard as a district, as a community, as a faculty at Kaysville Elementary. This would add a whole new measure of providing safety for our students. And I just 100% agree that the location that the county is considering across the street from Kaysville Elementary should not happen for the safety and well-being of our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
With all the discussions that we've had since last October regarding the Code Blue or permanent homeless shelter, I keep circling around to one question, why Kaysville? There's been a lot of conflicting statements, is it temporary or permanent or both? Where, here in Kaysville? Why in Kaysville? People are concerned that the temporary shelter will lead to a permanent shelter. We all know that once homelessness is introduced, it does not leave. It was stated this week that it must be shared. What exactly does that mean? Does every city need to have homelessness? Why? If you had an illness breakout, would the solution be to share it and spread it to most or all the cities? If you had, if you had violence breakout in one area of the county, would that need to be shared or would you isolate it to protect the people that are in your county and to help the people that need help? In other states where they have shared this, it has only created a more unmanageable situation. One gentleman referred to it as the cat in the hat syndrome. In listening to the county meeting this week, many observations came to mind. A bit of time was spent talking about mental health. This is a big part of the homeless problem. Is Kaysville equipped to deal with this part of homelessness? We also heard discussions regarding permanent shelter. Is this what will really happen? Are we opening the door for Kaysville to have a permanent shelter? Money was mentioned a few times. How much money are we talking about? We really don't know because it keeps fluctuating between temporary and permanent. In the county meeting, we were told again that the commissioners can put this wherever they want in any county building that meets the requirements. Let us look for a county building that is close to a mental facility, hospital, transportation, and especially where there is a homeless problem. Why can we not seem to see the city-by-city breakdown of homelessness in Davis County? People have tried, but no one seems to have access to it. Regarding safety, will we be accepting trespassed homeless? These are people who have been kicked out of other shelters for violence or other problems. How will they screen the people that they are bringing? We've heard that they will bus them back. We've also heard that there is no way to force them to go back. Those that have cars cannot be forced to leave either. It is assumed that they will go back, but most homeless people are very aware of their things. Are they going to want to leave them with the hope that they will be there the next day? How and who is going to enforce this? Where is the concern for the residents that are already living in these areas and for the taxpayers? Shouldn't the discussion be about placing a Code Blue where the homeless are? This would cut down on transportation costs. I would assume that there's already an extra police presence where this already exists. This seems like such an easy decision to isolate it where it already exists and not make people leave their things and travel somewhere else and to protect the citizens of Davis County. Who and why is Kaysville such a focus? Thanks.
Thank you, Jill.
I just want to draw attention to something that has not, has been lightly discussed but not fully in this venue and I want to note, point the connection between the homeless concern and in the letters that have been sent to me and other citizens from both, from two county commissioners claiming that Davis County has 3,500 homeless teens. So I would like to point everyone to go tonight, if you can, to the Facebook page that I just posted, an article that my family sent to me some time ago. It was very alarming. It was about families that lost the connection with their youth because they were introduced into a teen experience where they were emancipated at the age of 13. The laws are not exactly the same, but the grooming is the same and the intent is the same and it was very sobering and it needs to be aware that we have, our $500,000 allotted teen center budget has become 1,700 plus for, because of donations and now the homeless teens are receiving $1,600 per year at the expense of some of the other students. I just want to think, us to think about what we're doing as far as pushing our families away from us and abdicating our responsibility as teens. I noticed that Carrie and maybe it was Nate that asked Lorene Kamalu about her numbers to about the 3,500. I personally called Jenica Whitaker to ask her what the 3,500 entailed and she did not deny that if the football team came to get a glass of water, they would be counted in the numbers. So I just want you to be aware of these things, to research the teen centers, to understand that this is a, something that may be less, more beautiful on the title than it really is and that we need to be aware. And I want to thank you, each one of you and each one of our citizens for holding a torch for the sanctity of the family and the identity of our youth. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Luke.
My name is Luke Johnson. I live out in Schick Farms, HOA, and I'm totally changing. I'm going off, not even going to talk about Code Blue. Coming because when we made the agreement with the city to take over our property, our HOA property out there, the agreement was on Trappers Field, what is Trappers Field now, was is that there would be no, no organized sports, basically. It reads something different in the verbiage. There has been organized sports, there's a porta potty that's been left out there that's been provided by the city. It looks like trash with the porta potty sitting there. The other thing too with our neighborhood is, is myself, Tim Hodges, who is actually one who helped write that agreement, another neighbor down the street on Bonneville, we all have horses. The trail, the horse trail, which is designated in the contract with the city, is titled as a right-of-way access for us. It's not titled as a public thoroughfare or a walking trail. The issue that we are having in our neighborhood is, is we've got graffiti going on our fences from that horse trail. We've got neighbors from other areas coming through our properties using actually mine and Tim's driveways as a trail to go back and forth. We've had cars go through our driveways, we've had kids on bikes coming through our properties. My horse, my daughter's horse, and she's actually addressed the mayor in an email about things with this, they've actually come into our property. Our horse is a barrel horse, he is a, what's called an appendix, he's a thoroughbred. He gets out and he starts running, good luck catching him. Tim's horses are Mustangs, the other horses down the street, one's a stallion, that's a foxtrotter, very, he's very aggressive. It's not a safe area for public to be walking. We would like the city to put either gates or bollards and signs up saying that this is not a public thoroughfare. The other side of this is, is that I've offered to the parks department, if they bring the product, I would bring my landscape team in and spread the product to clean up that horse trail. They think cleaning the horse trail or maintaining the horse trail is bringing brush cutters and cutting the weeds down. That's it. It's become a nuisance, it's become a, it's become a threat to anybody who lives on there with their properties getting tagged and it could also lead to somebody getting injured from our animals. That's my two cents.
Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you for those that participated in our public comment.
She thinks, I think you maybe made a mistake. I put my name.
Oh, you did?
At the top of the page.
Oh, I don't see it.
Do you mind me speaking?
Jason, sure, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Sure.
I wanted to talk about the Code Blue issue and first just wanted to say that I think that you're doing your best. I think everybody up here is likely opposed to a homeless shelter coming to, to Kaysville or for that matter, Davis County. I wouldn't presume to say we ought to send it somewhere else if I don't want it in the city that I live in. And I think that you being on the task force is you trying to do your best to represent the citizens of Kaysville. I'd like to encourage the body, you guys have the power, you can stand up and say, "No, this is not coming here." The county can say that it's our building, we can do it and you have no say, but that's, that's just simply not true. You can say no. You have a police department at your disposal, a fire department at your disposal, you've got a room full of citizens that I'm certain would be interested in forms of civil disobedience to keep homelessness, a problem that doesn't exist here, from coming. One of the members said earlier tonight, I won't mention, that they think it's time to pick a fight and I completely agree with that. Stand up and say no. And I, I think they'll back down. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate you participating, all of you, in public comment. I'll turn the time over to the council. Does anyone have anything they would like to share?
Yeah.
Councilmember Oaks.
Go ahead, Mike. I'm just going down the row, I think we all got something to say.
Sure, sure.
You know, I, this is the part where I have, sorry, I don't have a filter sometimes, you know, but, you know, they write legislation down there, House Bill 499 is very problematic. It's a bad bill and that bad bill got passed through there and it's been put onto this county to take on something that was in another county and another county's problem. There comes a point when you, you've seen the task force, you've seen the citizens, it's gone back and forth and back and forth, people try to accommodate, but there's no way to really accommodate. This is just truly a bad bill and it is time to stand up and pick a fight. I mean, we have an attorney here, the county has an attorney, the other 14 cities in this county have attorneys. It's time to make a task force of attorneys and it's time to get together and let's go back and say, "This is a bad bill. You're trying to fix a problem in Davis County that's not in Davis County, that's in another county. Fix it in that county, but don't put it onto our county. It's time to pick a fight." I, I'm sorry I say that, but it is. It's time to actually stand up for what you believe in and say, "This is not a good bill. This doesn't fit our area, it doesn't fit us around here. If you want something temporary, it should be on wheels. Anytime you put something in a foundation, it's not temporary." So I for one, don't want it in my city. We don't have that problem in our city. I don't want to introduce it into the city. It is problematic. This is a problematic bill. This is one of those bills, as a county, we need to band together with our legal teams and do it the way it's supposed to be done and say, "No, this doesn't work for us, it's time that we went against this." Because trying to accommodate it, everybody's just reaching for all these ways to try to accommodate something that doesn't fit anywhere. So it's just time for us to say, "No, this is not a good bill, this is a bad law, we need to fix the law, we need to figure it out, but we're not going to just accommodate it because you passed it down to us." So that's my opinion. I, I don't, you know, I, I would like to see it go in that type of a direction. I, I think we keep trying to fix something that we don't have a problem with and we're trying to accommodate something. I'm, I'm sorry that Salt Lake County has this problem over there, but I don't see how sharing it into Davis County is going to make theirs go away. So it's just going to make ours bigger in our county and I don't think we need it and I think it's time that we create our own task force, we get whatever we need to. I, I don't know what the legal ramifications are, I don't know how to do it, but we have legal teams that should be able to say, "Enough is enough, this doesn't work for us, we're pushing back."
Can I, can I just say amen? There's no such thing as a temporary anything when you're talking about government programs. And, and we all know that, we said that. My wife and I spent last week on vacation celebrating our fourth anniversary, even though it's 41, in San Diego. And we're downtown San Diego for a week. Now, it wasn't San Francisco or Los Angeles, but our heads were on swivels the whole time because of the homeless issues they have there. And, and I'm not a small person, but my head was on a swivel and my wife was quite nervous. And it really wasn't that bad in consideration, but it's every block. And, and when you happen to walk, watch down on the sidewalks and the city does a good job of scraping the crap off, but it's not dog crap that they're scraping off. And, and the smells as you're walking downtown in a beautiful city and I was just thinking, "We don't need that. We don't have a problem," has been said numerous times, "and we don't need it." There's a lot of frustration and angst amongst residents and amongst the council. We have, I really appreciate that Mayor Tran brought this up last year at the behest of the committee or the, that's looking at this, asking about billboards. Because if we would have accepted billboards, there was an individual who would open up a facility in Clearfield near the Freeport Center that they would have been happy to put this in. But there wasn't a city in Davis County that wanted billboards and allow electronic billboards among, on the side and I can't disagree with that. We, we've tried to be transparent. There's a lot of, I think, a lot of disservice to mayors who want to be involved and there's six mayors on this task, task force or whatever, but my heck, which mayor doesn't have a conflict of interest is it saying, "Not in my town as they know their towns." There were much better ways to do this, but I go back to what Councilmember Blackham said, "This is a bad bill to begin with, creating the problem that doesn't exist." I wish I had a solution for homelessness. Subsidizing it is never a solution. It's the old, you know, teach man how to fish instead of giving him fish. And as a nation, we just keep giving fish and phones and drugs and free healthcare that doesn't solve the problem. I wish I had a solution. If I did, I probably wouldn't be here, I'd be out making millions of dollars peddling it, but I don't. But I do know that this isn't it. I appreciate what our mayor has done and, and I think she's been berated for it a number of times unfairly because she really does have our best intentions at heart as a city. I wrote notes, so I apologize, I don't normally take notes. We don't have the correct resources here in Kaysville. We, we just, we just don't. We've had folks that have stood up here, residents that have had worked with homeless over the years, they understand what's needed. I wish they were involved in this task force to be able to help and look around the county and say, "Is there someplace or what other options might be available?" That isn't how it happened. We will, we will stand up for the residents. I mean, I think I'll be the first in line if I, if Councilmember Hunt doesn't be me to, to call the Tribune if they ever really consider putting it next to an elementary school. Because that, that would be criminal, in my, in my opinion. And, and I'll be out there with the protesting. That, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I appreciate my council members up here, what they have to say about this issue. The question was asked, "Why is Kaysville getting all the focus or the heat?" It's because our residents are so great and you've, you've spoken up and this is how good government works. It's kind of a messy process getting to good solutions. And so I applaud all of your effort and all the folks that showed up and spoke with the county. Now, I, I just want to make it clear, it's not Kaysville gets the county or the county gets the Kaysville. This is the county, Kaysville, all the mayors trying to find a solution to a state law that wasn't, it, it's not necessarily a bad law, but it's not, it does miss a lot. And it's interesting that our mayor, our council, we're hearing from state representatives, we rarely hear from state representatives and it's because they're hearing from you. And, and I, and I think the notion of it's time to fight, I agree, but it's time to fight in an appropriate way, through data, you showing up through legal means, by no means should this get out of control or civil unrest or anything like that. With that being said, it's interesting looking at the law and I, I think we know the law pretty well here. And it specifically states that any indoor facility owned by a private organization, a nonprofit organization, a state government entity or a local government, which would be municipalities in the county, is okay to use for a Code Blue center. Now, that really opens it up to a lot of options and I know the county and the task force with all the mayors is looking at this. Now, it's, the way the bill was written, it puts all these mayors on a task force. Well, each mayor is going to look out for the Well, each mayor is gonna look out for their constituents. And then you have the county that's overseeing, looking at it from a different perspective, trying to help organize as well. And so this is a really challenging situation. The issue is almost impossible to solve. But on top of that, when you have a task force with multiple mayors in the county trying to do their best and lead out on this, it is really difficult. Now, there are some counties I've heard in the state that have not lifted a finger, done anything to comply with state law. And I don't know if that's the best approach either. I know that the mayor and us city councilmembers have visited with many different folks, we've visited different centers, warming centers, homeless centers. I just have to applaud, the warming center up in Logan is fantastic. It's in a church, and they have an executive director, and they have Utah State University that provides nutritious food. They have professionals that have full-time jobs that sleep on cots next to people with mental health problems. Now, you probably ask, like, how does a professional sleep on a cot in a warming center? Well, I heard some of the individual stories, and it's people who've had such an incredibly difficult hand dealt to them in life, where they lose their home and they can't afford to buy another place due to health issues and cancer and medical bills. And so I do think it is a real problem that we should address. We live in the Rocky Mountains, and it's...the state was trying to solve a problem, but they did it a little bit haphazardly, and they should have consulted with the counties and got a lot more input before they passed this law last year. Now, the question, back to the question, why is Kaysville the focus? I applaud our mayor for bringing up this issue immediately upon hearing of any potential building in Kaysville being used for a warming center. Now, I say potential. Now, it's not a...nothing set in concrete, because this is a moving situation where there's a lot of parts and it's challenging. But I applaud our mayor, and, you know, I feel like when you're a leader and you lead out, you tend to take a lot of arrows to doing that. But it takes gumption, and I applaud you, mayor, for doing that, and allowed for this space for us as a community to really talk about it. And the county's hearing you, the state is hearing you, we're hearing you. But I'm confident that the county, the task force, will come up with a good solution. And I think ultimately, to get to a good solution, we need to be data-driven. Now, it's...I looked at all the...each city in Davis County and their population size. It's kind of interesting. Now, Kaysville, we have the third largest population, thirty...a little bit over 31,000. Leighton sitting at 76,000 plus, Bountiful 43,000. And it kind of goes on down from there. Now, I think we should factor in mass transit, I think we should factor in health, public health, the Davis County Health Department, our law enforcement. We need to factor in the point and count. I have not seen those numbers, I'm sure the task force probably has, but they do a point and count every year in the wintertime, and they can...it gives you a rough estimate of the homeless folks on the streets in the wintertime. I would love to see that factored into this, because I don't believe we had any in Kaysville this last time around. We may have had one or so. But when you look at just the different options, we just, as a city, we are absolutely unified on the fact that we feel like Kaysville is not the right approach. We have an elementary school that's very dangerous, we have businesses, we have residents nearby. Either location, it's not one location against the other. And I think there is a way forward to find a good solution. When you look at the state law, nonprofits, state facilities, I mean, there's a lot to work off of there. And I guess I just want to leave off by saying, you know, we welcome any input from any resident in our community, or anyone in Davis County. And if you know people, if you know of potential locations, or people who want to get involved, please send that to us, send that to the mayor, she's on the task force. We will continue fighting for you, we will continue working with the county and the task force to come up with a good solution. So, thanks.
If you've followed any of these meetings, you know, I don't usually want to belabor something that's already been said, so I'll be kind of short. I think mostly everything I've thought of has been covered by the other councilmembers over here, and I appreciate their thought process in going about this. You know, kind of just want to second what they said. And kind of like Councilmember Oaks said, you know, I wish that we knew the solution to this problem, and I think there can be a solution, but that we just don't have it yet with the information we have and the information we've been given. We just...there's just not enough to make the kind of decisions that Councilmember Jackson is saying, the kinds that will actually help people move out of these situations. And I know, you know, I...we get caught up in a lot of this stuff, and I think it's good to point out that we don't, and I don't think anyone here, because, you know, when you talk about this, you get a lot of, well, you're just not very Christian. And I just want to point out that I don't think that's the case with anyone in the audience, or any of us on the council. None of us are saying, yes, please, let's let people freeze to death. And I just, I always think it's important to put that out there so that we all know that the priority is helping people, not just fulfilling a bill. It's not just a checklist, these are real people. I was speaking to a family member just this morning, who found out her husband will probably be losing his job, and that they'll be looking at, you know, shelter instability. And so, you know, it's a real thing. I'm not saying it's not complex, I'm not saying something has to happen here. I don't have the answers. But I think it's important for all of us to recognize that we do feel for these people, and to get that out there. And just, I just want to close, I guess, with saying that I obviously am opposed to this location, the other location. I spoke with some of the business owners near the emissions center, and they spoke about how they would have to leave because of potential crime, just because, you know, they own a business that would be affected by that. But so, and, you know, as has been said, it's not one location versus the other, it's let's find the best location to solve the problem. That's what we want to do, is solve the problem. And solving it definitely isn't putting it across the street from an elementary school. And I said I was closing, but one more thought is, well, I'm just, I'm adamantly against both locations, especially by an elementary school, but they're not, they shouldn't be fighting with each other. And then, I think the last thing I want to say is, you know, we've gotten into some trouble. And I'll just say, I am not ashamed of the fact that we've been transparent about this, and I am proud of our mayor for having the foresight to get onto the task force, to bring this up. But I don't feel in any way that looping the residents in on something that could potentially impact them has been the wrong thing. You know, have there...has it been...it's been weird. Like, it's been a weird thing. And it's been back and forth, and it's been inconsistent, but, you know, if miscommunications happen and incorrect information was ever put out by anyone, that's just the nature of communication. And I'm okay with the fact that maybe there were some miscommunications on any side, but that people were at least informed of things as they went along, so.
Going last. Yeah, I just did...I mean, not for either location, I don't think it works, I don't think it fits. All for Mike's idea of, Councilmember Blackham's idea of creating a separate task force, sending a letter expressing our frustration with the bill in general, and the problems with the law. I don't think there's much else to say. I mean, I think all of you know how we feel, and I think, you know, our mayor's been transparent. I don't see why that's an issue. I think oftentimes, a lot of the reason why most of us ran for these seats was because we were frustrated about something maybe that had happened that wasn't transparent, and so we try and be as transparent as possible. So, you know, I think that it presented with the choice, we're gonna fight, we're gonna fight for Kaysville. There's a perfectly good parking lot in Leighton City Mall where a fantastic, fantastic canvas tent can go, or a couple of, you know, buses with some bunk beds in them. You know, I just, I think there's creative ways to figure this out and make sure that we're taking care of people, that's important. And homelessness is not something to be joked about. I think all of us are worried about people on a cold night, that's who we pray for. We want them to have a place to be warm, we just need to figure out the right spot. It can't be rushed, and we can't be forced to solve it over some deadline because it's August 1st. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone. I really appreciate your comments. I will make my comments really short, you've heard a lot from me. First of all, Jason and I had an opportunity today to meet with the Director of Open Doors. Now, this homeless space is really new to me. Honestly, I don't know a lot about it, but I've sure learned a lot in the last year and a half. Open Doors is a great organization. What they do is they help people with first and less rent, if they qualify for the program, and they get them into permanent housing. You know, and they just rent a normal house somewhere, a normal apartment. That is a great program, in my opinion, because there is some insecurity, a lot...it's hard for someone to save up $5,000 because rents are so high. And so, I think there are good solutions out there and available. I have an opportunity to meet with, actually, the bill writer that wrote the amendments for the latest renditions of House Bill 499. I'm gonna go meet with him and some state legislators, and try to work through the process to find out, okay, we're not just saying no, we're trying to be part of a solution. We want to understand, we want to know how we can make the tweaks to the bill, how we can make recommendations to make it work for our county, like has been mentioned, is a unique situation. So, I ran, we all ran, I believe, to strengthen relationships in Kaysville. And, you know, in an effort to be transparent, in an effort to make sure that we truly are representing our community, I have spoken up about this. I don't feel like I've broken any rules or any confidences, I've been very open and transparent about it. I will say, though, you know, relationships are super important to me. And to anyone, you know, at the county level that I've offended, I want to apologize for being offensive, I don't apologize for our position. I stand behind our position, we will stand strong, indicating everything that everyone said. You know, we need data, we need to make good policy decisions. And so, I do value relationships. At the end of the day, it is our duty to work together and to create collaborative environments, and really to, you know, to represent our communities. But in representing our communities, I'm not embarrassed, I'm not ashamed, and I'm not apologetic for sharing information that affects our city. And so, thank you for being here. If you have any questions, please reach out to us. You know, it...I did volunteer to be on the task force because Kaysville was mentioned, and I want to know what's going on here. And so, I am one vote. The task force will make a recommendation, and then the state will review the plan. Now, the recommendation, of course, you know, if it's accounting-owned property that we recommend, of course, the county's gonna have to say yes or no to that. And at the end of the day, if the task force makes a recommendation that the county doesn't like, they can have, they have the ability to override our recommendation. So, nothing has been officially recommended or voted on, we're still working on that. But I'm committed to doing everything that I can do as a council, you've heard, as a city, you've heard, to really advocate for our residents, and to create a solution, find a solution that makes sense for Davis County as we respond to this state requirement. So, that being said, I appreciate you being here, thank you. We'll move on to the rest of our agenda, we appreciate...no, we do not take comments from the audience, but thank you. Oh, no. No. Thank you, guys, though, we feel you, so thank you. We appreciate all of you. Yeah, yeah, the silent waves.
Stick around to clap for the next presentation.
Clap heartily for the next presentation. We're turning the time over to our fire chief. Thank you, department, for standing here and being part of our meeting. Come on down, Chief Erickson.
No, I will not take that long. We're good. Mayor, councilmembers, city leaders, residents of Kaysville, thank you for your time today. I appreciate it. Probably one of the favorite parts of my job today. We're here to honor and celebrate firefighter Brent Law, 35 years with our city. And that's quite an accomplishment anywhere, to be honest with you. Brent works full-time with the federal government, with Forest Service, they're fleet coordinator, but he's given 35 years on his days off and works hard, and as he'll tell you, he's a I didn't know this. I asked Brent to write me up a few things, and he did. 1988, he explored working with the police. He went and talked to the Kaysville Police Chief. He offered a volunteer position to ride along and help the community events. He liked the job. He was excited, and he told his parents, and they were not happy. They didn't like that, they didn't want him being shot doing shift work. He was a little disappointed. He grew up on a farm in West Kaysville, working with animals, he was interested in going to vet school. So he looked into that, and because of his grades, hmm. That didn't work out either. So he didn't look to being an EMT and working with people to provide medical care, animals and people, kind of the same. His words. "I took the EMT class and loved it. There were some Kaysville volunteers taking the class and told me to look into the fire department. Spring of '89, he received his EMT certification, talked to the chief, and it went on from there." At the time, it was old fire station, First East, now used by the City Rec Department. We had two old American LaFrance engines, two old state surplus Jeeps, water tanks for grass fires, excuse me. Everyone had an old Motorola pager that paged off calls when they went off instead of tones in the station. It was exciting. We were able to order and get a new fire engine later on, we got a 75-foot aerial ladder. We were big time then. We were able to do the first operator truck, real fire, when the Fairfield Junior High roof caught on fire during construction. It was on the front page. It was a good time. I have seen and been a part of changes in the past 35 years. The new station was a huge upgrade, all new vehicles, we can count on working. Part-time, some full-time, manning where currently at. We have gone from first responders to medical service. Many are changes and progress. Many great people have come and gone in the Kaysville Fire Department. Brent said he has great memories on calls and made a difference in people's life, and making a difference in someone possibly their darkest and lowest time of their life is what makes him love the job and stay around. He loves the service to make a difference. Some of the calls have been the best in some ways, and some not so good. I am extremely grateful for the opportunity I've been given to be of great service and do, and have met great people. Grateful that city supports the department and sees needs where the working, for working equipment, and a nice place to live. Grateful for the loving and understanding of nearly 30, 41 years, five children, 12 grandchildren, that put up with me and support me. I'm not gonna read this next part, Brent, because it's about me, and this is about you. So he said, I'm not sure how many years that he can go on doing this, but he loves this department, and he appreciates his time. Brent Law.
Thank you.
35 years Brent Law, in sincere appreciation for 35 years of loyal and distinguished service to Kaysville Fire. Thank you, my friend.
Congratulate.
Want your family up here? You sure? We don't need to take them.
Oh, family.
No? Yeah. You want your family up here?
Take all the time you want.
Is your family here?
Can Brent's family come up and give them a round of applause?
[applause]
Can Brent's family come up and we give them a round of applause?
Mayor, council, thank you very much, appreciate you, appreciate your time.
Can I take just, just a second? I just want to thank everybody for this and the support we have and really want to thank Chief Erickson for supporting there that he didn't read, but he should have read. Um, city's come a long ways, fire department's come a long ways with him, with what he's done for us, what he still does for us, for the support that he gives us for everything he does. City has come a long way in 35 years with fire department and I'm excited to be here and, like you say, I want to stick around for a few more years, but not sure how many more it'll be, but it'd be nice to still stick around and I just wanted to thank Chief Erickson for what he does for us and the fire department and this group of guys that we work with. It's a big family that you have to count on and do those things with and I'm just excited to be part of this, the whole thing and serve, serve the people of Kaysville.
Thank you so much for all that you've done and for...
Hey, do you get your own bar calounger now at the, is it a massage chair at the station?
I did want to say at the beginning, there's about 40 of us and Brent's 35 years, we don't have many that are over 35.
Oh, right, right. That's true.
I think the average age right now, or whatever, is probably close to 30.
Close to 30, well, thank you so much for your service and we appreciate you. Thank you. So outstanding, we are such a great city and so lucky to have wonderful people and wonderful employees. Appreciate you. Item 3A, 3B was a presentation by our Public Works Director, he's going to present next time. So now, council, do we have any conflicts to declare? Nothing? Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A through G.
All second.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, consent agenda is moved and passes, thank you for that. All right, council member reports, does anyone have anything they'd like to report?
Oh, I should probably, I think we did. Uh, just, uh, in case Trent's watching, the Memorial Day, again, the Memorial Day program was fantastic, if you haven't been, go next year. The speaker was amazing, the honor guard, everything, uh, bagpipes, you name it. Um, and the cemetery just looked awesome. So, thank you staff, thank you for everybody that helped participate in that. We just, we have the best cemetery, I guess that's something to brag about in, you know, in the state, I think, so, that's all.
Thank you.
Oh, um, well, just because we, I think people like to know that we're doing stuff, things slowed down a little bit in the summer for some of my liaison positions, but still, still working, still working on them, got stuff going on. CTC's coming along, youth court's adjourned for the summer. Oh, and we're working towards, uh, possibly partnering with our, what are the, the parks, the Parks Board, the Parks and Rec Board, um, to get a designation that may allow us to apply for possible grants for, um, anything that we might do as a city to promote better health, um, so our Parks and Rec programs, mental health. Um, and those are, those are kind of exciting things that we've got going on. And then I also have the opportunity with the League of Cities and Towns to participate on the, I don't know what CHA stands for, the Housing Affordability, um, there's like a, like a side board thing that helps kind of inform, so I'm excited to work on, uh, helping inform and research on housing affordability. It's one of the things I'm passionate about, having been on planning commission before, so, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to comment, we talked about the budget earlier and, um, it's been an interesting process. I've been feeling a lot of stress, my wife keeps asking me, why are you so stressed out? And I keep talking about the budget process. And, um, I, I think all of us on this, uh, up here feel that stress because we, this is a sacred experience and, and we don't take it lightly. And it's been a painstaking effort, but a good one, uh, working through this budget and trying to figure out what we can cut, what we can move forward or move to, uh, another year. And, uh, it's not final yet, we have another, another, uh, planning meeting next week and so there's still some changes that can be made, but, um, it just, it's a, a privilege to work with my colleagues up here and the city staff and, and, um, I just wanted to mention that and, and we welcome any continued input until the time comes when, uh, we pass that, so thanks.
All right, thanks for being here, everyone. Turn the time over to Jason, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Uh, no, mayor, other than just, yeah, as Councilmember Jackson said, we have one more, uh, budget workshop, that's just this coming Wednesday at four o'clock, so we'll look forward to seeing everybody there.
Okay, all right, everyone, thank you. Does someone make, want to make a motion to adjourn?
移到
All moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good job, guys. I can't turn my mic off. Thank you all so much, appreciate everything.
Yeah.